It's called a work session for the February 28th meeting to order. But it's not made to play about.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which states, one nation, a God, and a universal, representative, and sovereign government.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Anybody got any concerns or comments on the agenda before we move on? Or the consent agenda? Okay. We'll move on down to, we've got Mr. Drake Mitchens. Okay, now right in that, by far. Spurlock, you're up.
Yeah, interconnect back order with your program. Dr. Rooks would come on up.
And then I'm program.
Yes, good evening, board and Mr. Spurlock. We want to take this time tonight to educate you on behalf of what we're requesting from you all to support us with the middle years program, both at Oakland Middle School and at Oakland High School. You guys are probably very familiar with the IB program at Oakland High School and through this very brief presentation, I will share with you how the two programs tie together and encourage you tonight to ask any questions that you may have. Mr. Marshall is here from Oakland High School along with the IB coordinator from Oakland High School, and then I also brought Mr. Chambers, who is the assistant principal at Oakland Middle School that will be over the IB program and our potential possible NYPD coordinator at the middle school level. So we're all here to answer any questions that you have about this. The first thing that I want to focus your attention on is what our vision statement will be at OMS moving forward. We have refined this in hopes of it aligning with the IB program and the NYPD program. So at Oakland Middle, we're, we develop productive citizens that help the world continue to evolve. So that will be our focus and you will see that that is tailored to the concepts aligned with IB NYPD. We're going to show you a brief video that says it much better than I can about the concept of NYPD of the middle years program within the IB program, and then I'm going to elaborate about what that looks like at Oakland Middle School.
My first impressions of the NYPD were, wow, this isn't a traditional setting. This is a creative framework that allows students to engage with one another, engage with the teacher.
NYPD allows the teacher to be more of a facilitator. And that I like. I like being able to go around, seeing the kids work together, helping themselves, helping each other.
Really focuses on the person as an individual thinker, an individual learner, and somebody that is creating their own pathway. I love being able to nurture their individual strengths. And that's what the NYPD does. I want, I don't want the students to just think that science is science and art is art, and that's something that the NYPD really nurtures. It nurtures that cross collaboration.
So one of the main idea for NYPD is we emphasize the holistic learning. We're not looking to how long the essay they can produce, but we're actually assessing their understanding and analyzing skills.
The way we learn is different because we understand what we're learning. We don't memorize it.
Our students are exposed to different parts of the world. Our students are then more globally aware and more prepared for the real world.
The internationalism, the capacity to understand others, to put yourself in others' shoes and see different perspectives, something which is so crucial.
And then the knowledge that we are hopefully not only giving them the academic skills that they need, but, but really the life skills to be able to build on, to be able to take with them.
And then we have the assessments that are used around the world that really put the stamp on the rigorous instruction.
They're going out with a sensitivity as to their, their role in the world.
And the NYPD provided them with some of the most valuable tools.
Okay, so as previously mentioned, the difference with NYPD and IB is that the middle years program is a whole school culture. And you can go ahead and go to the next one, too. And so with the whole school culture, we're looking at a school environment fostered sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, and 10th grades. So with IB at Oakland High School, that is actually a program that students obviously have to be eligible for. With NYPD, we're building up for the students to be ready for, for the IB program. We're preparing them whole school through the learner profile, the approaches to learning, and the global connections. Now, what we did is we prepared these posters for you guys, and we're going to leave them here with you tonight. But overall, the IB NYPD program is very similar to IB in that it is a gradual process. So next year, one of the first things that we will do is we will put this learner profile into the language and context of our schools. So we will encourage our students, both at Oakland Middle School and Oakland High School, to speak the language of enquirers, to be students that are knowledgeable, to focus on that conceptual understanding, which is a big focus for us as educators currently, is to get students to understand the why behind learning and not just steps or procedures based on what they're taught. And so we'll use the learner profile to begin to speak that IB NYPD language in our schools, and that will be a whole school approach that we take. Another incredible component of this program is the global connections. You guys saw in the video that it is a worldwide program. It is global. It touches all different parts and all different countries. So by allowing our students to be exposed to those global connections, we believe that we're not just preparing them for high school. We're not just preparing them for college, but we are preparing them for real life, for world outside of education, for world once they do leave K-12, and then whatever they choose to do after they leave high school. So the global connections piece is a huge positive because it brings an awareness to our middle school students and those lower high school students that struggle a lot with looking outside of themselves. So big picture, at Oakland Middle School, we will offer ELA, math, science, and historical literacy, which is social studies, within the NYPD program. We will also offer a foreign language or American sign language, and we will have a choice as we begin the process of implementation about what our foreign language will be and what it will look like. And then in addition to that, the last component is performing arts. However, underperforming arts are programs such as STEM. It's also where the PE classes fall into, any type of visual arts. So it's a lot more than just what you would consider traditional within the realm of choir and band, which will also be included in that component. In addition to us doing this school-wide approach, which is really what separates NYPD from IB, and that's a big thing to understand, we are also going to do something specifically with our 7th and 8th grade students as we build and prepare them for entrance into Oakland High School. About 90% of our student body feeds into OHS, and we are very interested in doing everything that we can within our zoned community to build up the IBDP program. So what we are trying to do is create a pre-DP cohort of students. So we're going to look at a cohort of students that can be academically challenged, that we can prepare for the diploma program once they reach Oakland High School's 11th and 12th grade program. Oakland High School does a lot of this through their advanced honors classes now in 9th and 10th grade, but we believe that we can better support it through the NYPD partnership, both at Oakland Middle School and at Oakland High School. In regards to the partnership, these are just some of the components that we know will help make it successful. We believe and want to have strong communication between the NYPD coordinators. It has been my focus since I became principal at Oakland Middle School three years ago, both when Mr. Spurlock was there and now when, now that Mr. Marshall is there, to work very hard to build a partnership between the two schools. And both when Mr. Spurlock was there and now with Mr. Marshall, they in turn want that focus for us as well. We're very concerned about building that Oakland community and helping our students be as successful as possible, and so this is a way that we can do it through this partnership. In addition to that, it allows for us to create planning opportunities. So it's, we're looking at vertical alignment essentially. So our 6th, 7th, and 8th grade students, we're going to have the ability to plan with the high school teachers so that those students are better prepared when they go across the high school for 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. So the big question, and the question that I know you guys want the answers to, is startup costs. How much is this going to cost our district? What do the numbers look like? Why are we going to do this at Oakland Middle School versus another middle school in the district? Why should we do this for you guys? So what we have done is we have broken it down for you specific to the partnership, and that is a super important component for you to know and understand. This is what it's going to cost for the first two years, okay? The big deal is that I can go through there and list for you guys each of the fees and how much it costs and why it costs what it does, but ultimately, at the end of the day, because we're allowed to have this partnership with Oakland High School, which is only going to continue to grow and develop those schools in that community, if another middle school in Rutherford County chose to start the NYPD program and did not have the ability to partner with their feeder high school, this same program would cost them approximately $56,000. So because of the fact that you all are already in partnership with Oakland High School and doing such an outstanding job with the IBDP program, that this gives us an opportunity to do a whole school approach where we're impacting 1,200 students, and then in addition to that, it allows us to form that pre-DP cohort, which will then grow the DP program at Oakland High School and increase those numbers as well. So we very much believe that it is a win-win for both schools and for the students. We know that the rigor and relevance in the classrooms will improve just from the IB learner profile, the global context, and just that big picture conceptual-based learning, learning practice. So at this time, I'm finished with my presentation. If you guys have questions for myself, for the team that I brought, or for Mr. Marshall and the team that he brought, please feel free to ask.
Let me ask you on this training, okay? You've got 11 teachers you're training. Is that, I thought we could get them on, on site for less than that. Do y'all know?
We can, Mr. Spurlock, and if you'll see the $6,000 launching the NYPD for OMS and OHS, so the initial training is going to train basically our core content teachers at Oakland Middle School and Oakland High School. And then when you see the launching the NYPD, that is when they will come on site and train both faculties.
So we, so we have to have, we can't train these, these first at the same time we're training everyone?
Our, our understanding is that we cannot, no sir, because we've got to get those core content teachers trained in year one to start the implementation process.
Yes, my question was, what are we getting from the, doing the faculty that we're, we're getting, we're not getting, I mean, that we're getting extra? I mean, if it's a, we're teaching, I mean, we're training concepts here, instructional concepts, learning concepts. So why do we, why are we sending, why do we have to send out these 11? Is it, is it, could you speak on it, Dr. Chastain, since you've been?
So basically, what the individual training addresses is some of that school-wide planning piece. So NYPD is unique from DP in that they do unit plans, which is similar, that, that language is familiar, but it is a particular school-wide approach. So that training for individual teachers is to help set the stage for the training that then comes on site.
And what we have opted to do as well is we've opted for the online version of that, which allows for us to more effectively train more people. So by doing it online and not sending them away somewhere, but it's obviously when you send someone away for that school-wide training, you experience travel, cost, lodging, et cetera. So by doing it online, which is an option that NYPD offers, we can start that school-wide training, which is going to get our lead teachers prepared to establish their unit plans in year one.
So as we, as we explain the middle years program in the entire school, we're not, we're still teaching our standards.
Absolutely.
You might want to speak on that.
Yes, sir, and that is important to note. In fact, we believe with the direction that the Tennessee, that the state of Tennessee is going in regards to instruction, that there is no better time to introduce NYPD. Because NYPD whole school is focused on conceptual understanding. It's focused on teacher facilitated learning. It's focused on small group instruction. So all of those components of successful schools that we are now seeing because of the rigor of Tennessee state standards, those things are only going to be reinforced by NYPD, because NYPD is a practice. Like Mr. Spurlock said, it's concepts. So it's a practice that we're teaching our teachers truly to be more effective, globally-related teachers.
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Number nine, RCS Summer Conference.
RCS Summer Conference and assist technology support contracts on tab two. Contract with Jessica France to serve as a technology consultant and technician to set up and provide technical support for assist conference for new teachers, July the 19th through the 22nd of 2019. And the Rutherford County Summer Conference, all, which include all RCS teachers from July the 22nd through the 24th of 2019. The total expenditure of $767.72 will be covered by Title II funds. Title II funds will be in the amount of $650 plus $117.72 to cover the board's matching benefits. The required payment of usual and customary benefit are included since Ms. France is a school system employee.
Hey, any questions, comments? Move right along, number 10.
All right, these are Rutherford, 2019 Rutherford County School Summer Conference practitioners that's within our own county. Several Rutherford County teachers will provide a one 75-minute presentation as part of the Rutherford County Summer Conference. The Rutherford County Summer Conference will be held on July the 23rd through the 24th of 2019 at Segal Middle and Segal High Schools. All expenses will be covered by Title II funds. Title II funds will be used at the rate of $250 per day plus $45.28 to cover the board's matching benefits. Individuals will be required to pay usual and customary benefits since they are school system employees. The following individuals: Aaron Everado, Tara Anderson, Caitlin Bullard, Chris Butler, Ashley Katherz, Kelly Sessick, Amy Gammon, Lori Gober, Emily Gullidge, Cindy Hayes, Krista Hoekstra, Carolina Hutchins, Jamie Hubbard, Mia Keen, Jennifer Kinsman, Matthew Marlett, Sidney Miller, Krista Murfree, Megan Parks, Kathy Paul, Kyle Prince, Allison Reagan, Richard Rohrbach, John Said, Lisa Snyder, Hillary Stevens, Candace Thompson, Alexander Trakus, Ann Trail, and Megan Turnbow.
This is a conference we've been doing for years, correct?
Yes, we're using our own, these are our own practitioners here. They'll be doing some presenting.
Any questions on that? All right, number 11.
All right, Summer Training for Pre-AP English, tab four. Rutherford County Schools is contracting with Christian Sikora, Sikoria Consultant to develop and prepare, deliver, and present the pre-AP English program based upon consultants' knowledge and experience related to teaching English and to the Advanced Placement Program. The workshop will consist of four days of training for 30 Rutherford County teachers. The workshop will take place at the Professional Development Center on July the 16th through the 19th of 2019. Contract fees will be covered with general education funds for instruction. This is a program I think we did last year with, two years ago with math, Mr.?
Right.
And what we're, what we're attempting to do is increase the rigor within our courses in middle school. One of the things I mentioned to Mr. Zago that we're going to do is we're, we're going to start tracking these kids so that we can see that the training that we're presenting, we're providing is giving us what we, our expectations are. So we'll start tracking them through the teacher that they had into the high school years.
Mr. Spurlock, is that additional training? Have they already taught this course before?
They've already taught the ELA, but what they'll do, they'll be going into more in-depth in some of their, in looking at more in-depth instructional strategies that they'll be using to address the rigor within the classroom. As we look at growing our students, one of the things that we, we call as educators, the backbone of learning is called tier-one instruction. That's what's happening within the classroom. If we want to improve, that's where we have to improve. We have to become better at the tier-one. When we look at our tier-two, that's, you know, that's going back and reteaching a standard or a concept, as, you know, that takes additional time, and then, of course, we have skill deficits that we have to address in our tier-threes. But a lot of times, if we have effective teachers that are doing the solid work within the classroom in the tier-one, this is going to eliminate some of the issues that we may have later on down the road.
And currently, our AP classes are fuller than our IB classes.
Are the AP classes fuller? I, I don't have no knowledge of that. I haven't really looked, looked at that. I mean, generally speaking, IAP and IB, usually you'll have more IB courses and you'll have, obviously, there's more IB courses than there are AP courses, but, and a lot of that is determined, we only have one IB school, and that's Oakland, and those, you'll, I don't know, how many courses do y'all have in IB, right offhand? You know, 12 or 15 courses? You usually don't, I don't know, Central Magnet may have 12 or 15 AP courses. I'm not, I'm not, they have 29 AP courses, okay? Right, because they're a magnet school, but typically in a high school, you may have four or five, something like that, or maybe less?
Okay, right.
Oakland, did you mean, because you have IB and AP on the same, but they're not competing courses?
Right. You would take, you may take an AP early before you take an IB, maybe.
You have questions? Okay, number 12.
All right, number 12, Facility Use Approved or Exemption Pursuant to Board Policy 3.206. Public education schools and institutions, post-secondary education institutions, private universities and colleges, governmental entities or agencies that provide benefits to the Rutherford County school system or have in-kind relationship approved by the director of schools may request the Board of Education to allow an exemption from the use of facilities fee, which the board may allow or deny based upon the details of the specific requests. The following groups qualify for the exemption: Boy Scout Troop 320, Annual Spaghetti Dinner Auction, League of Women Voters, Free Ballet Performance and Private Reception, Blackman High School Wrestling Practices. And then you can see for your information, only those that sought exemptions and that were not on that list.
So, question, and we're saying that these have been approved for waiver of facilities use.
The ones, the prior that were read, the ones below, you know, this is where we kind of get in, where I, I think you need to extract the ones that have been approved, but apparently they've been put on there, too.
Okay.
These, for example, Blackman High School Wrestling was approved. It's up there. However, Above the Rim was not approved. Tennessee Pride was not approved, and those are the two that were not approved there.
Okay, because I'm seeing down here two League of Women Voters. I guess I'm trying to figure out on the League of Women Voters and the Boy Scout Troop because I thought in our last policy changes that those were, I don't know about the League of Women Voters. I'm struggling to figure out how they fall into one of those classifications.
There, there are nonprofit organizations that, you might want to speak on that, Ms. Page.
Sure, well, nonprofit organizations, that policy gives them access to use the facilities, but they have to fit into these categories that are described here in order to get the exemption. Some of these, for example, the Boy Scout Troop, it, the history of the board has been to grant it for, under their discretion, but that this is fully within the board's discretion to make those changes.
And I think that's what we did, and y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, but we said starting in August.
Oh, okay, okay.
If you recall, we're starting in August, that we would send those, and, and what we're doing is we're not denying access, but we're just requiring, starting in, starting the next fiscal year, next August.
Exactly, that we won't be waiving fees, right.
We're going to require funding, cleanup fees and things of that nature.
I guess, and, and not to disparage certainly at all, I know that the League of Women Voters does great things, but to me, I mean, it's, it's a bit of a political organization, too. I didn't realize that nonprofit in of itself was something that we had been granting.
I think the in-kind part is they're, they're providing us a performance for, for, you know, for our kids to view if it's.
That's correct, because they're offering a free performance, and the League of Women Voters, you're right, can be construed as a political organization, but they are self-defined as nonpartisan, and so there's no partisan politics occurring at this event. It's a free recital.
Okay, got it, all right.
So, so that we're all clear on it, starting in August, and I think they've already been notified, too. If I'm not mistaken, everyone's been notified.
Yes.
Mr. Director, I'm sure I'm missing something here. I'm positive of that.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I wouldn't have thought that Blackman High School Wrestling.
They're not.
Would be, okay.
And, and, and I'm, I'm with you. I'm, I'm probably too, I don't, that shouldn't be there.
Right, okay.
Okay. All right, so, I'm like you, I have to look at things a couple of times, but, not that you have to, but I do.
Well, we're going to have to list a whole bunch of teams, a whole bunch of places we're going to do that.
Yes, sir.
We don't want to do that.
No, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, financial matters.
Okay, we've got our school meal price increases for the 2019-20 school year. We are asking to increase the price for school lunches and breakfast by 25 cents for the 2019-20 school year. Our last increase for school lunch prices was 25 cents for the 2016-17 school year. The price for breakfast was last increase in 2008 and 2009, and the following changes will take place if approved. Breakfast will go from $1.25 to $1.50. Lunch in the elementary will go from $2.50 to $2.75. Lunch in Midland High will go from $2.75 to $3. Teacher price will go from $3.25 to $3.50. Visitor price will go from $3.50 to $3.75. The holiday meal will remain at $5. At this time, the 2016-17 increase, a $2.78 weighted average meal price, became our goal per the federal pricing requirements. We've been able to stave off increases, but our current weighted average lunch price is only $2.64, while the federal standard has gone up to $3.02. At a minimum, we need to
At a minimum, we need to go up by, um, by a minimum, we need to go up by twenty-five cents on a lunch prices, and would like to increase the breakfast by twenty-five cents so that we will be better, uh, positioned to apply for, for waivers in the future if they stay available. Please remember that the required minimum price for paid lunches will continue to increase most years because reimbursement rates go up. So as we look at what's called, or I guess it's our, what's it called, lunch A? I think it's called A lunch or something like that that we get subsidized for. As that goes up, we've gotta maintain those lunches that we sell have to be in similar price. Not the same, but in close proximity.
And the waivers for free and reduced, the waivers for free and reduced?
Do they go up?
No, I was asking, the waiver, it says apply for a waiver, that's for free and reduced?
Right, yes, mm-hmm. Oh, no, 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 okay, the waiver, what he's talking about, I think the waiver is when we get out of line with the free and reduce and, and the paid, we, we get, we apply for a waiver as long as it's within a close proximity. Am I correct in that?
And there's no guarantee that we will get the waiver.
Right. I'm gonna turn your mic on.
We would have to go up fifty cents to be, to assure ourselves that we would not need to apply for a waiver.
Right.
We don't wanna do that. If we don't get a waiver, we could be back.
Sure.
Then the free reduced pricing is a separate issue, and we, we're in compliance on all of that. Try to get those applications out and back in.
What happens to the meals that don't get paid for?
We had that same conversation.
They have to be covered from non-cafeteria funds. You try to collect them.
From non-cafeteria funds, huh?
They cannot be, there can be no, uh, collection expense that is charged to the cafeteria fund.
Well, where would we get those funds?
Wherever we can get them.
And, and that, we have, we've probably cleaned it up some. I think our, our biggest, uh, challenges are in our high schools, and I'm speaking as a high school person. That's been one of our biggest challenges, is that correct?
Yes.
I have just a quick question, just, I'm new, so if you'll, what does it mean when it says the current weighted average lunch price? If it was two sixty-four, but it's three oh two now?
When you look at our mix between elementary and, oh, and secondary.
Right.
Okay.
The two prices that we charge. The adult is kind of a separate issue, the adult has to be a certain amount higher than our student price. That, that's kind of driven by, when it's at student price, we have to increase the adult prices. Yeah, it's kind of weighted average, and it slowly goes up every year. We generally do not know that amount when our budget is.
But it's well worth its price, I mean, really, if you look at the, um, the amount and what you get, especially that, that Thanksgiving meal, that's real good.
Thought we'd hold on one.
So, a cafeteria budget stands alone, doesn't it? And, um, okay, they have to break even at the end of the year, one way or another. Is that fair statement?
We are supposed to have about three months of operating capital. So, yes, we, we, ultimately, we have to make a little money in order to maintain that three months of operating capital. Our, our goal in that budget is not to make money, it is to maintain our three months. And after we have a rate increase, it'll tend to. Then as we incur increased costs, it runs back down, and we're, we're on the downside now.
Maybe I shouldn't get into, e, e, even go any further with this, but I would just, what happens if, if, if a child leaves their lunch money at home on the kitchen table and they come to school? What do they do? And is that up to each individual school, or, or do we cover that?
We, um, yeah, we charge, we let them to charge.
And that's where we get in trouble.
Yes, absolutely.
With owing money at the end of the year.
That's correct.
Never gets paid.
Or doesn't get paid.
Okay.
Mr. Sandvig, if I may, um, what is the cost per meal for us to serve?
I, I, I should be, I can get that information for you. Hopefully tomorrow, uh, Eric Smith is in a training, and I may not, I'll talk about it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to facilities.
Facilities, tab five, Oakland Middle, uh, School Annex. The final cost for Oakland Middle School Annex addition from, uh, RG Anderson Company is twelve million, uh, two hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred sixty-five thousand and seventy, uh, cents. The final change order is the credit in the amount of eight hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars and thirty cents. Construction and Engineering recommends approval of the final change order, change order number two from RG Anderson Company, of a credit in the amount of eight hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars and thirty cents.
Ooh, we like those.
We do like those.
That's good.
We like those. And, uh, that, help me out here, Mr. Sandvig, that would go into, um, our capital projects that fall under, would it have to fall under, uh?
Yeah, that, that money would stay in building program.
Right.
But we, middle school money, we will use one-third for elementary projects, two-thirds for later secondary, seven through twelve projects. A third of the savings that we finally have will be available for.
It would be a good time probably to, to explain to the new board members about how we have to share that funding.
Uh, we, the sales tax, the property tax, they are shared between Murfreesboro City Schools and Rutherford County Schools based on our percentage of enrollment. So right now, we get about eighty-five percent of the money on county property tax. The option sales tax is levied for schools. In a similar fashion, when we borrow to build schools, we have about eighty-five percent of the students. The cities, roughly fifteen percent are case studies. So any debt service project that affects grades K-six, we have to share those monies with the city. So, uh, the annex we were talking about last night at Health and Ed, about thirteen million in total, the county will have to borrow more than that thirteen million, and Lisa Nolan will write a check to the city where they are sharing that. So, when we're building a high school or two-thirds of a middle school, we don't have to share the borrowed money. When any other projects, so when I'm bringing forward building program amendments, I will talk about shared and unshared. And what, what I do, because we don't wanna share any more than we absolutely have to. I've watched that very carefully, carefully. So I will break it into, ultimately down into K-six and seven, twelve. Now, another complication, when we have years, like, a couple of years when the economy was really improving, we were building up our general purpose school fund, fund balance. We were able to transfer over a three-year period, I believe it was, over twenty million dollars from the GP ending fund balance to the school construction fund for elementary projects. That money is already shared from the ending fund balance, and that's why you only wanna spend it on K-six projects. Spend it on, otherwise you're using shared money out of GP for a secondary project, where you don't have shares.
Right.
Maximizing use.
Insurance update.
We'll have an update on the report tomorrow night. One of the items on the agenda for tomorrow's meeting is the preparation for the commissioners and the board members to go to the county benefits, so we'll have an update.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dr. Anthony, what time is the meeting scheduled for tomorrow?
One o'clock, ma'am.
Directors update.
Uh, we'll be reporting tomorrow.
All right. Wait till tomorrow night on TLN? Or you wanna say something tonight?
Well, I'll talk a little bit tonight, and then I'll have more to report tomorrow, if that's acceptable.
Go right ahead.
Um, I wanted to go ahead and mention, because we've talked quite a bit the last couple of meetings that have had discussions during our board meetings about the plan to try to schedule another joint session meeting with the city school board in hopes of getting in front of the commissioners and legislators as well, although we've already had the meeting with the legislators. And what we're finding unfortunately is the month of March is becoming next to impossible to get anything scheduled. Um, we narrowed it down to a couple of dates, and none of them work well for some of the people on our board or on the city board as well. And there seems to be a consensus that at this juncture, um, it probably wouldn't be the best use of our time, I guess might be the, the best way to put it. So I have proposed a suggestion to the chairman, and I would ask for your feedback or opinions. Of course, we do have, the, the joint resolution has been completed. And my understanding from Ms. Michaels is it has now been signed off on by all of us and by all of the city, um, board as well. So it's ready to go out to the legislators, you know, I think based on what we discussed, we're gonna send it out statewide, not just to our local delegation, correct? Um, and kinda switching gears here, we are on the agenda for the county commission's Steering Committee meeting next Monday night, and it's, we're on there for a couple of things. First of all, it's a follow-up to have further conversation about the seat we were requesting for the insurance committee. Um, and of course, I think everyone knows from that last Steering Committee meeting, it doesn't look like we're gonna get approval from the Steering Committee to get an actual third voting seat for a school board member. So it looks like what we're going to wind up requesting is, and, and I think they kind of suggested this, is that there be a third seat at the table, so to speak, and that it would be a school board member, um, just not a voting position. However, the person in that spot, um, would have voting privileges if one of our sitting members, Mr. Sandvig, or whoever his successor's gonna be after July. And Dr. Anthony, if one of them can attend a meeting, that our board member that's in that seat would be able to vote by proxy for their, to count for their vote, if that makes sense. But while we were on the phone, because at the last Steering Committee meeting, we also talked about the resolution that we were putting together on the voucher issue. And so Commissioner Stevens, he called me yesterday and, and was asking about what we needed to put on the agenda. He said, well, are you gonna talk about your resolution? So we're actually on their agenda, unless we request to change it right now for the Steering Committee meeting on Monday night, to talk about both the insurance seat as well as our, um, I'm sorry, one of those moments, um.
Resolution.
Resolution.
What happens when you get to be managing, you've had a long day. Um, my thought is that what we should do in lieu of this meeting is use that opportunity to present our resolution to the Steering Committee on Monday night. We're gonna try to see if we can't get Mr. Campbell or someone from the city school board to also join us. So we show a united front, as we already have, with all, both boards signing off on the resolution, and present it to the Steering Committee and request that we be allowed to present it at the next full commission meeting, and then making the request to the commission at that time that, that they either agree and hopefully will vote on doing their own resolution, or if they want, Mr. Estes had a, had a good suggestion. You wanna talk about that?
I had a good suggestion.
Mr. Estes suggested, or we could allow them, we could allow them to even add it if they agreed, if we have a majority of the commission that agrees with our resolution, that we could just add an addendum page to ours as well. Although I don't know that we wanna wait for the next full commission meeting to send ours out, correct?
If, uh, Steering doesn't give us a hundred percent vote, then we might as well go ahead and send what we have. If you have one or sending vote. Is that correct?
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Okay, so that'll be the plan then, that we'll ask Ms. Michaels to go ahead and, now that she's got it signed by both boards, to go ahead and get it out. But when we bring it up at the Steering Committee on Monday, if it looks like we might have an opportunity to convince the commission to do their own, we can always redo it with an addendum page, or they can simply take our resolution and create their own. Does that, does that make sense?
That sound good there, buddy?
Um, one other thing I'll go ahead and, and mention tonight, um, and I have spoken with the chairman about this. Because of some changes that I'm having with, with my career right now and some demands that it's putting on my time, um, I feel like I have not really been able to serve as your TLN rep like I, I would have liked to. Uh, the time commitment has become a bit cumbersome. So I have asked the chairman to, um, allow me to step down from that role, and he is gonna talk about or look at appointing, I guess, another board member, somebody that would be willing to step up and do that. Do you wanna talk about that, Mr. Chairman, you wanna talk about it tomorrow night?
Well, we appreciate what you've done for us, and, uh, we understand that sometimes making a living's more important than, than chasing legislators. So, uh, if anybody would like to serve in that position, uh, just let me know. And, uh, I always have the pleasure of appointing somebody, so we, uh, we do appreciate your hard work and everything you've done for us, and we understand. And, uh, is if I hear from somebody before Thursday, which would be tomorrow, we will, uh, put that out, and if not, we'll work on that next week.
And I appreciate the board's understanding, um, and I wanna assure everyone that I will still continue to be as supportive in that arena as I possibly can. Um, the challenge is gonna be that we just simply won't have the time to be up at the Capitol and working with our legislators like I feel like the person in this role should be able to do. So, thank you for your understanding.
Thank you.
I will try to have more of a report tomorrow about specifics of bills and things that are going on, but not prepared for that tonight.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I add to that for just a minute? I didn't get to speak with Ms. Moore before the meeting, but, um, the Day on the Hill, the TSBA Day on the Hill, all the information that they handed out, I have given to, uh, Ms. Michaels and asked her if she can get that copied and given back out to us tomorrow for the next meeting. Uh, there's, there is some information on there for bills that we need to be aware of that aren't hidden under caption bills. Um, specifically, there's some, um, security, um, bills that are directed specifically at the school board. So we need to, we need to look at those. Um, and so that's, that's all I had to say, just was gonna bring that. And I'm, I, I'll just say this, and Tiffany, since her, her, I'm kinda putting her on the spot, she's got former legislative, um, relationships there. Um, so I think that she would be a good one. However, if, if she doesn't have the time to do that, I would be willing to help do that.
Thank you. I wanna thank you for that list of, that you sent us. I don't, I don't know how you came up with all those vouchers.
It was all back in cell block four hundred.
But, uh, it's quite an extensive list. Anybody would like to have that, uh, we would be happy to email it to you. Okay, Ms. Hodge? Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, next, this list down here is an appeal, which will not be heard till tomorrow night. Uh, you have a packet on it, you can read it. There's also a student handbook in here that, uh, you can look at page sixty-two and will give you some of the answers, uh, maybe. Next, we'll go into general discussion. I have, uh... I have the board work session for Tuesday, March nineteenth, been changed to Wednesday, March twentieth at five P.M. Other than that, anybody else have anything?
What did we want to mention, last night's meeting? We, we did get our land.
We did.
And Matthews' property was a seven-nothing vote, and Chris Shannon's property was six-one vote, and I, I think we're going to, A Board at some point will build some beautiful and much-needed schools on that property.
Thank you for bringing that up. Have we had any luck? Does anybody know on something out? Eight forty ninety-six, Carter?
I think we do have something in the, in the pipeline, but nothing, nothing set in stone. I think I'm going to get Mr. Lee start working with Mr. Clardy, because Mr. Clardy will be finished up at the end of this month. So, Mr. Lee, you got to add something else to your plate.
He needs something to do. Just nod, yes, sir.
When you say end of this month, are we talking February or March?
On, who, who, on who?
Mr. Clardy.
Mr. Clardy, we leave this end of the March.
Okay.
Yeah, end of March.
Hey, anybody else? All right, nothing else, we're adjourned.